Ready to go? All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're going to take up the afternoon agenda, which has one agenda item on it, and that's an appointment of two people to the Cultural Commission. I understand we have five applicants. I see four or five, four out there? Five? Okay. I see them all. Okay. While you're all in here, before we send some out, just know that, understand, not know is the wrong word, just understand that these are some of the most difficult decisions we have to make up here. And so, you know, we all appreciate everything that you, you know, by filing and wanting to participate in your community. That's great. And please, no matter what happens here today, keep up your, your spirit in making Carson City a better place. Keep applying because, you know, just do it. I mean, it's, you know, these are hard, so bear with us and don't, don't, you know, we all put our pants on one leg at a time. Don't worry about it. Come on up and just tell us what you think. All right? So with that in mind, who do we have first? We're going to take up as the order they're listed?
Yes, Kelsey Penrose.
Hi. How you doing, Kelsey?
Good, how are you?
All right. So, you know, how we work these things is we, I should've said that when everybody was in here, it wasn't safe speech, but we all try to ask the same question, couple questions of each applicant, so nobody gets a different question. Sometimes we'll dig down a little bit deeper, but we want to give everybody the same chance to answer the same questions. And so, kind of to start off, you know, I have two, and the first one is just to kind of get you going. Why don't you tell us about yourself a little bit, you know, and then why you want to serve? I know we read everything on the, on your application, but, you know, just take a few minutes and tell us about yourself. Brag a little bit.
My name is Kelsey Penrose. I was born and raised here. I graduated from Carson High School in 2011, and I attended UNR for some time until I ran out of money. And then I graduated from Western Nevada College in Carson City two years ago, I believe. And my focus in the arts is, on a personal level, is writing and photography and ceramics. Those are my top favorites. Currently, I am a reporter for Carson Now, and before that, I was a reporter for The Record Courier. I also was a writing tutor at Western Nevada College. And I also work in publications. We're starting a Genoa publication soon, which I'm excited about because it's a really cute town and I love it, which doesn't really count because it's not Carson City, but we're close. And on the cultural aspect of things for Carson, my favorite thing that I'm doing right now is, for Carson Now, I created the Nevada Lore Series. And so, I write once a week about different legends, stories, or historical events that have occurred in our area. I kind of use that term loosely because I've done a couple on like Bodie and things that we still associate with ourselves regardless of them actually counting as Nevada. But, yeah, besides that...
Any thoughts, Kelsey, on how you'd like to see the arts and cultural events marketed or rolled out in Carson City?
Yeah, so I actually have a loose background in marketing. I've done marketing both for The Record Courier and Carson Now, and before that, I used to market for Dell, for Dell University. And I think social media is the best way to reach people, especially because everybody's so busy all the time, but everybody always has time to check their phones. And so, really being able to market things through the internet and then also through signs and billboards around town, I know, is still really important to people that are passing through. You know, we always have the banners up downtown, and those reach a lot of people that go through them. And then also, kind of marketing future events at current events that people might be attending, especially like Nevada Day is coming up. And I think that as far as marketing goes, there's so many people that attend Nevada Day that having like a list of upcoming events that might be following Nevada Day would be a really good marketing strategy as well.
Okay, great. Welcome, Kelsey.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for just a little creative thought. If the Nevada State Prison ultimately opens to the public, what arts opportunities could it provide to Carson City and the region? Use your imagination.
I think definitely photography would be a no-brainer, especially because it has been closed for so long that I don't know exactly what the state of it is in there, but it could potentially be like a time capsule. And one of the most important, I think, one of the most important aspects of our community is our tie to the past and to our own history. And so, being able to present tours and then photography exhibits would be really great. And it would also be really cool to like turn it into a gallery at some point. I think that would be really fun, but I have no idea if that's allowed or not.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Kelsey.
Hi.
I think Karen and I got the same memo this morning.
Yeah, I got that one's gone.
I also have a philosophical question for you as opposed to a technical question, which is what we usually ask. So there's no right or wrong answer to this. I'm really just looking for your thoughts. Should funding for public art be raised through fees or taxes such as a new construction fee or something similar? Or should funding for public art be left to the private sector?
I think that there definitely should be a government part of it, especially there was just a recent poll that was done, really recently, I think, that most Carson City residents are very interested in the arts and in continuing the arts in our community. And since those are the taxpayers, I feel like if it was up to them, they wouldn't mind. But on the other side of it, too, I feel like fundraising is easy if people ask, and a lot of the times, they don't think that they'll be able to get funds, and so they don't ask for them. Whereas there's a lot of local business owners and local companies, or even the larger area companies like Tesla, like Google, that are moving in and want to make a good impression on everybody that I think would be willing to make donations. But as a specific question, if I think that the government should be funding stuff, I say yes, because it would increase housing, not opportunities, but the market, I guess. And it would make us a better tourist destination spot, would bring in more funding. And so, having arts being more of a forefront for Carson City, which up until the recent years has been mostly gambling and, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, gambling and then, you know, outdoor recreation, which are both great for, you know, our city on a monetary level. I think that if we want to increase tourism, having a more arts-focused area would be important for us. I rambled through that a little bit, I'm sorry.
So, good afternoon.
Hi.
So, have you read the Arts and Culture Master Plan?
Yes.
Okay, so if there, what excites you the most in the plan that you would like to see furthered?
So, I really think that the cultural aspect of having a, I shouldn't say better, but having more of a partnership with the local Native American communities, I think, would be really important, not only to have more of their, you know, arts and their own culture, but also integrating it within the normal arts events that we would do, especially because there's so much cultural history from the, you know, the Stewart Indian School and the Markleyville, which again, doesn't really count, but it does, you know, especially with the Native American populations. There's so much culture that we have that is completely lost. I took one of those community classes for the Washoe Language and Arts Class, and it was really cool. And there's only, I think now, three elders that still speak the language, and the rest of it is lost. And they have, they have the language documented, I think, at one of the UC schools, but besides that, it's been completely lost, and it's because nobody cares anymore. And so I think that if we could make people care, then that would be a really great opportunity. And then on top of that also, I really like the part about getting down to the artists, like the local artist level on a personal level of, I really like the open studio idea. I know that they do that in Tahoe, and that's always a big tourist attraction, but also a local attraction, too, because you see this house that's in your neighborhood every day, and then all of a sudden, there's an open studio sign, and you're like, oh, Jerry from down the street is a ceramics guy. That's really cool. And so, it increases relationships between community members. And then something that I would like to see added is some sort of program that would include mentorship, that we could partner local artists with youth artists that might be wanting to learn more about something. And then we would have volunteers that are local artists that would, you know, on like a monthly or bimonthly basis or something, would sit down with them and help them, you know, get better in their tasks, especially because unfortunately, in the schools, there's not a lot of funding for arts right now. And so, I think having that one-on-one would be great for up-and-coming artists that want to learn more.
What's your number one idea to bring to the commission if you're on it for improving Carson City? Oops, excuse me. What's your number one idea for bringing to the commission, if you're on it, to upgrade Carson City's arts and culture?
I think probably marketing. I'm pretty good at marketing. I'm not trained in it in any way, shape, or form, but I've picked it up over time, and I know, especially from working as a reporter, I know what types of things will be of interest to large groups of people and how to market those things and, excuse me, and when to push them out and when to hold off on stuff, so that a lot of times, too, there's great events that are happening that get buried underneath each other because they're all being put out at the same time. And so I think that if I were put on the board, I think that that's something that I would definitely be bringing to the table.
Secondly, how important do you believe, for Carson City's economic development, is the arts and culture initiatives in this town?
Yeah, definitely. Like I was saying before, I think that we don't have that much constant art in, in our city. And things like the Sound Garden at the Brewery Arts Center are really great things that people can just stop by at and play around with and take their kids to. And so I think that having more things like that would increase not only tourism, but increase people getting out of their houses and interacting with the arts when it's not specifically set events, when it's more of just, like integrated into our daily lives. And I think that especially with our area blowing up right now, as everybody's starting to call it the new, like the new San Francisco, which I'm not okay with, but it's fine. But now that more people are moving here, and especially people with money are moving here, I think that this is the time to be able to get funding and to be able to transform our city with a more arts-focused stuff, yeah.
Pretty good. So, any questions of us? Anything you want to fill in, add?
I don't think so. It's a really hard question to ask. I ask people that all the time, and they never have an answer for me, and now I don't have an answer either.
All right. All right. You know, as Brad said, there's no right or wrong answer, you know? Just to say you did a good job, and so thanks for applying.
Thanks.
You're welcome to sit in here and listen to what we do.
Okay.
Go on, government process, too, okay? Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
This is Chris.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right. Chris, one, as I said earlier while we were all together here, one, thank you for your applying, and we each ask the same questions, or nearly the same questions of each of the applicants, so nobody gets a leg up. And, you know, I'd like to get you started by just asking you to tell us a little bit about yourself, and then why you want to be on the Cultural Commission, then I have one other question.
Okay. So, I was born in Reno, but raised in Carson City. Moved to Carson City probably when I was in second grade. Ever since, always lived here, always been anchored here, I guess I could say. Went to Sealer Grove Elementary, started out in band, and that was kind of my first introduction into arts. Played the clarinet, thought it was a manly instrument to get into, but didn't think that when I was going into high school. In middle school, definitely in Eagle Valley Middle School, I continued with band, and I really liked the way that music kind of connected with me. Definitely something that really sparked something in me, especially growing up, going through puberty, and thinking about so many important decisions in life I was going to make in the future. In high school, decided to stop going through with band, but instead I joined the NJROTC program, and I wouldn't give up that experience for the world. And that, I decided to continue performing through joining the unarmed and armed drill team. And we performed in competitions with other NJROTCs. You learned routines, you commanded different squads and platoons, and it was just a crazy experience, but it was so great to be up there in front of so many people and to have that kind of experience of getting over the initial nerves. After that, definitely something that came from that was definitely learning that public speaking was something that I really wanted to do. It's something that I really wanted to excel in, and something that I felt that was important to my career, especially in the future. Decided to go to UNR, but I didn't end up finishing UNR. It was working and going to school at the same time. Appeared to be too much for me, so I decided to try my luck at working. Currently, I work at the Washoe Tribe of Nevada in California. That's where I'm employed right now in their Social Services Department. I'm contracted under the BIA, so I am a federal employee there. And I'm the administrative assistant. My work is a little bit more than just that title, though. I manage all the programs, federal and tribal. I do burial assistance through the BIA, as long with the Indian General Assistance Program as well. And I also do the food vouchers that we worked with the Food Closet down in Douglas County, along with the thrift store voucher with the local church there, with the Helping Hands Church. Since then, I've just been kind of working in a professional setting and looking to get back to a community that has inspired me to go for something more. Even if I didn't get a education at UNR, even if I didn't pursue it, which I still want to at some point, life can't beat you down, and you can still get back up. You can still use public speaking to interview, to get into somewhere where you don't know if you can quite get there, but take a shot at it.
You're doing a great job, public speaking, right now, so.
Thank you.
Pretty good. Pretty good. So, my question to you, a little bit more specific, is, tell me your thoughts on how you'd like to see arts and cultural events implemented in Carson City or rolled out in Carson City?
Sure, absolutely. Definitely, as someone who's grown up in Carson City for most of their life, one thing that I've always noticed is that there usually is always something going on in Carson City as far as an event or as far as something to do. My mother worked in the WIC program, and after that, she's worked for the city in the Health and Human Resources. And so, for her, she's always been knowing what's been going on. So of course, cops for kids, going to the Nevada Museum over here just down the street, being able to walk downtown, see the businesses really flourish, especially growing up, you know, turning it to something that's completely different now. Walking down there is like walking downtown Reno, which is really something to really look at. Something that I would really love to see is kind of more modern art going through. I have a friend of mine who is a graphics designer, and one thing I've realized, especially with art, is that it's ever-evolving. Art, usually traditionally, when you think about it, it's something that you look at oil on canvas or a pen on paper. With my friend, he'll have a sketchbook, but most of what he's doing is on a tablet with a stylus. And what he does is he shades everything in, he can change the lighting, he can even print it out through a computer, and it's this whole physical thing. And it, art is its own thing. Not to say that things in the past aren't art, in fact, it's more valuable. But no longer are you seeing someone chisel away a sculpture. No longer are you seeing someone, you know, looking at a view and trying to paint it and say, okay, you know, this is the new modern form. Technology is something that's been introduced and reintroduced many, many times into art, and I think it's something that we could definitely put on a pedestal here in town and implement into something better.
Okay, Karen?
Welcome, Chris, and thanks for applying.
Thank you.
My question to you, just to keep your creative thought going here. If the Nevada State Prison ultimately opens to the public, what arts opportunities could it provide for Carson City and the region?
So definitely with the, definitely with that prison there, if I remember correctly, I believe it was one of the first to use an actual gas chamber. Definitely huge historical value, especially in the time in Nevada at the time, when you really think about, you know, what we're going through now, especially with how we're working on capital punishment as far as the prison system goes. We're still working on that. And a definitely good way to start that conversation is to go to a museum, see where it started. See what was something that brought that conversation up all those many years ago. And I think it'd be a great idea to definitely do that. Driving by it, I used to drive by it every, every day going to school, and I used to ask my daddy, you know, what is that? And he's like, ah, that's where license plates come out of. And, you know, and I would think to myself, oh, wow, you know, maybe I want to go. No, you don't want to go there. No, you don't. And I think it'd be a great opportunity. Great.
Carson City's finest gated community.
Yeah.
Chris, my question does not have a right or wrong answer, I'm just looking for your thoughts.
Okay.
Should funding for public art be raised through fees or taxes, like say, a new construction fee? Or should funding for the arts be left to the private sector?
Hmm, that's definitely something that's very interesting because there's two schools of thought with that. One thing to think is that we should be supporting our artists, our actors, musicians, especially within the community. And you think to yourself, you know, is it something that we should leave for them to fend for themselves, or is it something that we should curate and have a helping hand with, especially as far as government goes? And I've always been the type to think that struggling is kind of what really inspires art. You always think of the starving artist, and you think, you know, they're out there on the street trying to buy a sandwich from whatever they can sell. And I can definitely say, as someone myself, when I did band in middle school and elementary school, it inspired me to write music and compose and really record my own music, and I did that for quite a while, growing up. And it was a great way for me to kind of put puberty and thoughts and decisions into something physical, something I can write down and put to a backtrack and record it and listen to and say, yeah, that was me back when I was 15. That was me back when I was 14. You know, and to think that, I didn't get that from having a, you know, a smooth ride through school. I didn't get that through being the most popular person around. I got that through struggling. I got that through really working to get there, to really find my voice. And I think as far as the private sector goes, you know, it should be fine as far as, you know, if you really want it, you'll get for it. And that really, competition, I would say, breeds the best. And I would say that's kind of where the private sector goes in. Now, through taxes and stuff like that, I don't see, I wouldn't be completely against it. But, you know, I would definitely say if the private sector's done anything, it's brought us what we have today so far.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, have you read the Arts and Culture Master Plan?
I have read through it, yes.
So what element of the plan excites you the most, and why?
Definitely would be working with the native population here, the Native Americans. I'm half Native American myself and half Hispanic, and working for one of the largest tribes in Nevada, the only tribe that has two reservations here in the city itself. One thing I always see is that they're, they're completely immersed in their culture. That is what they live off of, their family, their relatives, there's so many people there that are connected. And reading through that master plan and seeing how there was a bit of a section there saying that they want to cultivate that, they want to help children who could be at risk, they want to help families get stronger and better, and to show that culture, especially with what I read through with the Stewart facility, I think that's great, that they're going ahead and getting that together, because that's, you know, for, especially for native people, you know, you look at that and you think, oh, man, you know, so many people are there, and I know they're building, they're trying to build new housing there as far as the Stewart community. And so they're looking for, you know, unmarked graves and stuff like that, and they're really trying to, you know, be careful and be touchy with everything is. But shining a light on something like that, especially shining a light on the communities and bringing them closer, instead of considering them as separate of Carson City, but including it as part of the culture of Carson City, that's the best way to go through with it. You never want to leave anything out, you're cutting out the best part.
Thank you. What's your number one idea to bring to the commission, if you're on it, regarding upgrading Carson City's arts and culture?
Thank you. I would absolutely go through with bringing up the idea of modern art as far as technology goes. I see tons of art around town as far as artists that are actually painting and sculpting, and, you know, of course, there's the giant head out there, you know? You can't drive by without looking at it. And I know for the longest time, I believe it was up at UNR, and I think it was up at UNR back when I was up there, but looking at something like that, you think, wow, someone took the time to really get into that, the eyes, the eyebrows, everything. And little details like that can be done with technology as well. You know, going back to that example used of my friend with his tablet and stylus, you know, he can zoom right into a little pixel and change the color on that pixel, and that changes the whole shading of it. He could take that and animate it into an actual cartoon. You know, he could take that, make it 3D, print it out in a 3D printer, and put it right there in front of you on the, on the table. And I think that needs to be explored more. I think that's something that should be shined upon, because as someone who's inspired in school by just playing a clarinet, you know, think of a kid looking up at something like that and thinking, I want to make a plane, you know? That guy, he drew it, and I got to see it made, you know? He, you know, here it is on a piece of paper, and then here it is in my hands. And as a kid, it inspires you immensely to see something physically there and say, I can do this.
How important, excuse me, how important do you believe to Carson City's economic development is the arts and culture community?
I think it's tremendous to it. One thing about culture as far as art and everything as such is that it's, it's something that is unique to a place. And especially if you go from Carson to Reno, you know, there's a huge difference. And a lot of people, they think, oh, it's just, you know, Carson's a stop to get to Reno. But, you know, you go to Carson, it's, it's a whole community, you know? It's been... It's been named a bunch of different things by travel agencies and such, you know, best place to retire, best place to go to, once your children leave home, you know? And it's, honestly, I think it's just the best place there is. You know, I, I grew up here, I love it here, you know? It's, it's, it made me to who I am today. And I think it's who I am in the future as well. And, you know, art and everything like that, I think that's hugely economically, that's something that, you know, I'll say, if I see something commissioned like by my buddy up on a wall, I'll buy it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anything you want to add? Any questions of us? Anything you want to add in conclusion?
I do want to, I guess I would say just a last statement, I guess, or a closing statement. Something for me personally that I've dealt with is, my wife-to-be is a DACA recipient. And the reason why this ties in is because she's the most important reason why I'm applying for this position today. And it's because the DACA program is at risk of being dismantled. And it, what it does is it enables her to get a normal job, basically, just to go to school, continue her education. And, you know, it's, it's at risk. And, you know, for her, politics aside, absolutely politics aside, for her, it's a scary thought to think that, you know, she feels unwelcome, you know, in a place that she's only known as home. It makes you think, where's her culture? You know, is it in the country that she was born but she was never at before? Or is it in a place that she grew up in for most of her life? She grew up here in Carson as much as I did. She left Mexico to come here, at the same time I left Reno to come here. And her culture makes you think, it, it, culture is a very specific term and I would say that the definition of it is when you go to a foreign place or you go to a place you've never been to before, the first thing you see when you get back is, I got, I was immersed in their culture or I experienced their culture. And experience is the key word. Experience is the definition of culture. People come from halfway across the country or halfway across the world to come to Carson City for the experience. And I think that, that is something that I believe as half Hispanic, half Native American, working for the, one of the largest tribes in Nevada, with two reservations in Carson City alone, someone who's always grown up here and who loves it here, I believe that's something I can help improve and that's something I can help extend to people like my fiance, Diana. And I, I think that, you know, it should be for not only people who visit, but for people who are here and don't take it for granted.
Pretty good closing statement, good.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome to sit and listen. Kelsey's back there, so, you know, we'll see where we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hi, Lynn. How are you doing?
I'm very well, thank you.
Have a seat and get settled and when you're ready, we'll get going.
All right.
Is it raining outside?
Not yet, that I can see.
All right. Well, you know, we ask the same questions of everybody and so, you know, when you get ready to speak, Lynn, just push, as Mark said there, just push the button in front of you. What, just to get you started up, what, tell us a little bit, you know, about yourself, what you, you know, how long you've been in Carson, what do you think and, you know, just, and then why you kind of want to be on the Cultural Commission, then I have another question for you, a little bit more specific, okay? And just gets, just, just get started, that's okay, there you go.
My name's Lynn Kerrigan and I've been in Carson City right around 30 years. I'm a retiree. I formerly worked for the state of Nevada and then before that, other stuff. I'm very, I applied for this position because I'm very interested in culture, specifically in art, that part of culture. I, I've traveled all over to consume art and it occurred to me that I wasn't doing enough in my community to contribute to the arts and culture of Carson City. It's all well and good to travel around and find it elsewhere, but Carson has a pretty strong cultural, a, a pretty, it's pretty strong in the arts and culture, I think, for a city at size. But I do see a willingness to do better on the part of the city and I would like to be part of that.
And following up on that one, do you have specific ideas on how you'd like to see the arts and cultural events rolled out in Carson City? We have a master plan, but do you have specific thoughts about, you know, how it should be done?
I, I would like ultimately to see a high level of integration among all of the, you know, the, the organizations and the agencies that are devoted to art and devoted to promoting culture in Carson City. I, I would like to see a lot of advertising, a lot of promotion for the cultural events that do occur here. And even things like bringing the public art in and so forth, I would like to see that, I'd like to see those be very high-profile things in our community. And I would like encouragement of people, for people of all ages to be participating in the arts, particularly schoolchildren. Because I, I personally think that art is tremendously important to civilization. I have some friends who are a bit concerned about the direction of the country right now and they say, what can we do? And I say, support the arts. Because that ultimately is what will keep civilization going and bring us all together. So, particularly schoolchildren, as I said, and also the business community, I would very much like a high level of, of participation from the business community.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. Okay. This could be tough, guys.
I know it is.
Folks, it's gonna be tough.
Can we grow the committee mark? Lynn, welcome. Looking for your creative thought here. If the Nevada State Prison ultimately opens to the public, what arts opportunity could it provide for Carson City and the region?
It could, it's a big place. It could, it could provide a lot of things. It could provide housing for artists and residency programs. It could provide museum space. It could even, you know, you could have a mini Alcatraz out there, which people find fascinating. I've been to Alcatraz twice, you know? There, there are a number of different ways you could approach this. There's room for classroom space. So, I would say, I would say there's one place where you needed a really good plan because there is so much potential. And figuring out what exactly you wanted to do and how you wanted to roll that out would require planning, a lot of planning.
Hello, Lynn. My question has no right or wrong answer, I'm just looking for your personal thoughts. And my question is, should funding for public art be raised through fees or taxes, such as a fee on new construction? Or should funding for public art be left to the private sector?
I'm a person who is willing to pay reasonable taxes for reasonable benefits to the community. And I personally feel that there, there, I, I would, I would raise money through taxes. I do both. I try very hard to get it from the business community, from the private sector, from personal donations. But I'd also be willing to spend tax dollars on public art.
Good afternoon, Lynn.
Good afternoon.
So, have you read the Arts and Culture Master Plan?
I have.
So, what element of the plan do you like the best and why?
You know, I can't, I don't remember what the elements of the plan are, so I can't tell you that. I, I do remember that it's very ambitious and, and there's, there's lots of stuff in there. And I would assume, I would assume that there is something in there about integration of the cultural and artistic resources in the community. And if that's there, I certainly think that's a high priority.
Thank you. What's your number one idea that you would bring to the commission, if you were on it, to upgrade Carson City's arts and culture?
I think, again, I would be looking for integration and participation. And for integration, what I would like to see is all these groups that are out there promoting arts and, you know, providing all artistic and cultural experience. I'd like to see them all working together at some level. And I think that can be done, after all, they have a hugely common community of interest. And I would also like to see promotion to encourage participation, particularly, as I said, from schoolchildren, so.
Thank you. How important to Carson City's economic development is the arts and culture effort in Carson City?
Well, I think, I think it's pretty important myself. And I'll tell you why. For one thing, I consider the historic resources of Carson City to be a hugely valuable cultural asset. And I think our historic resources are, are important to promoting this community, the, and the economic welfare of the community, to bringing tourists in and things of that nature. I believe the historic component can probably be an initial draw. And then, when people come in and they see the level of artistic experiences that are available in the community and they're able to participate in those, that's going to further stimulate interest in Carson City from the tourist community, so.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
And no questions or anything? That's okay. All right. Well, you're welcome to sit and listen. We have two more interviews. But thank you again for applying. Good to see you again. How are you doing?
Good. I just left.
You did. Yeah, you did.
I'm Jennifer Smith.
So, Jennifer, you know, we ask the same questions of everybody, so everybody gets a level playing field. Why don't you tell us, you know, we probably know a little bit, but tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on this commission? And then, I'll have another question for you, it's a little bit more specific.
Okay. So, I am a business owner here in Carson. I'm a graphic designer. I own a graphic design business. I also teach at WNC. I teach web design, animation and motion graphics. And I am a member of the downtown, I'm on the board of the Downtown Business Association. And I think that arts are essential to build communities and, you know, continue creative inspiration in that community and I'd just like to help facilitate that.
And speaking of facilitating matters, do you have specific ideas on how you'd like to see cultural events and the arts rolled out in Carson City? Or implemented? I mean, we do it right now, but going forward?
Mainly, I think that what we need is to educate people on how to, how to find what is already here. I mean, and to bring in more as well. But I think that there's a lack of awareness. And I think that we could increase that by going through the schools, local businesses. So, I think that is probably the most important step to me, is to be able to find that, the art that is already here in the community and what's coming.
Okay.
Welcome. I'm looking for a creative thought here. If the Nevada State Prison ultimately opens to the public, what arts opportunity could it provide for Carson City and the region?
The first thing that comes to my mind is space. Space to show artwork, to, all kinds of artwork, because I, I haven't been out there, but I would imagine there's a lot of space. So, I think there's all kinds of opportunities to show artwork, to provide space for artists to actually create. And maybe event space also, for art events.
Hello, Jennifer.
Hello.
And there's no right or wrong answer to my question, I'm only looking for your personal thoughts on this. Should funding for public art be raised through fees or taxes, for example, a fee on new construction? Or should funding for the public art be left to the private sector?
I think it's very important, so I think it should be. I, I think that it's, I think it would be great to come through taxation. Yeah. I think it's very, very important, so.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, have you read the Arts and Culture Master Plan?
I have.
Great. What element of the plan do you like the best and why?
Probably the taking artists into the schools, to kind of continue on what I've already said. Taking artists into the schools and showing them what there is to offer here, inspiring them creatively, students of all ages.
What's your number one idea that if you're on the commission, you will bring to the commission to upgrade Carson City's arts and culture community?
Let's see. I think that we really need some more events based around arts. So, I think that we could, it would be great to have things like, like multicultural food events, something like that. Also, all kinds of multicultural art coming together so that people can compare and, and experience new, new things that they may not have seen before. So, something in that arena. I don't have anything specific.
Thank you. I think you've probably already answered this question, but I'll ask it anyway. How important to Carson City's economic development do you view arts and culture as being?
Well, I, I think that, I'm not sure how, how well it's doing right now as to bringing in, bringing anything in to tourism. I'm sure there's something, but I'd have to research that more. But I think that more efforts and improved efforts and bringing more art into the community will definitely drive the economy as far as tourism goes.
And do you think you want to add? Closing statement or anything, or any questions of us?
I don't think so. Maybe, you know, I've, I've lived in Carson City. I'm, I'm not born, I wasn't born here, but I've lived here since I was 10 months old, so that kind of counts.
That's even closer than horseshoes, that's all right.
Okay. So, it's close to my heart, the Carson City community, so I'd definitely like to see it, you know, thrive and continue to thrive.
Good for you. Thank you for applying. And we'll, we have one more interview, you're welcome to sit and listen.
All right, thank you very much.
Hi, Milo. How are you doing today?
Wonderful. How's everybody?
Good. We're doing well. I think we are, anyway. So, you know, we ask all the same questions of folks. So, why don't you, you know, just, you know, get, get you started here. Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on, I know, you wrote why you want to be on the commission, but just articulate it to us. Who, you know, something about you, brag about yourself, whatever you want to do. And then, you know, why do you want to be on the commission?
Well, hello, everybody. I'm Milo McCormick. I'm a student at Western Nevada College and by trade, a musician. I play in a local band, Mo's Motley Blues. Uh, sorry? I play the guitar and drums and bass and keyboards and I sing. You said, you said brag. I've looked into applying mainly for the interests of the community at large. I've seen, especially with Mark Salinas coming in lately, a lot of progress with the, the actions taken by the Cultural Commission. I've seen Carson City beginning to defeat fly-on-the-wall syndrome, which it's been doing for years and continuing to do. And I'd like to really participate and help expand on that. Expand on inclusiveness and, and an open-ended interest in the arts.
Do you have specific thoughts on how you might accomplish that?
I think it's a lot of... I think it's a lot of nose-down work, mainly. There's no secret recipe. It's just continuing, working on the same exact kinds of progress that have been made so far, hosting new events, maintaining ones that have been successful in the past, keeping the, the public eye and the eye of people, you know, going by Carson City, especially if, you know, people going, if they're on their way to Reno or if they're on their way to Gardenville, that they don't just forget Carson. Yeah.
Looking for your creative thought. If the Nevada State Prison ultimately opens to the public, what arts opportunities do you see it providing for Carson City and the region?
I think utilizing the creativity of those incarcerated, specifically organizing seminars from local artists, organizing events for the inmates to produce, to produce creative thought, produce creative works, showcasing, auctioning those works for the, for the sake of the inmates and for the, the expanding of our local artistic integrity as a community.
Hi, Milo. There's no right or wrong answer to my question. I'm just looking for your thoughts. Should funding for public art be raised through fees or taxes, for example, a fee on new construction? Or should funding for public art be left to the private sector?
I think it should be through raising in fees and taxes, mainly because it's a, it's a broad contribution to the community at large. It benefits everybody. There's, there's no one, there shouldn't be any one specific, as it benefits everyone, it should be contributed to by everyone. Nobody pays taxes to arts and doesn't see benefit from it, specifically businesses and, and the private sector. We'll see economic growth as people stop by, want to come back. The, just as an example, the Levitt Art, Levitt Art Series, a Levitt Amp Series. I've performed at it, I've attended it, and I've met dozens of people from out of state, out of town, who said that they will come back specifically because of that event. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Have you read the Arts and Culture Master Plan?
Yes.
And so can you tell me what element of the plan you like the best, and why?
The element of inclusiveness, specifically in my mind regarding the reservation just over the other side of Carson, and our extremely large Hispanic population, which the commission has started, of course, started work on. There's now a Hispanic commissioner, and that was exciting to see, just, just compared to everything else. Everything else is exactly what I was expecting in terms of, you know, developing the economic sector through art and developing our image through marketing, but the, the aspect of inclusive, inclusiveness was very important to me.
Milo, could you tell me what your number-one idea is that you would bring to the commission if you were on it to upgrade Carson City arts and culture?
Specifically, developing music in the community. Of course, that's an interest of mine, but I see, I can't remember which summer it was. I believe it was about two years ago. My grandmother was out, and we spent a great deal of time in the summer just walking around Carson City, just out in the open air. There's music everywhere, and I've seen that, but it could be, it's such a lively aspect to the arts community, because of course, we have the Da Vinci Head now here at the community center. We have highly visible art, but being able to not even just see it, especially at night if you're a tourist, exploring the town and feeling and perceiving that art pulsing through the community, I think is, is incredibly valuable.
Thank you. Could you also tell me, I think I already know what your answer would be, how important do you view arts and culture vis-à-vis Carson City's economic development initiatives? What, how important an aspect is that?
Massively. I think, like I said earlier, there are many towns and cities across the United States with fly-on-the-wall syndrome, where, you know, you're headed somewhere else and you completely forget every town. I mean, the last time any of you went to, say, Reading or Sacramento, like, how many towns along the way, the size of Carson City, do you really, really remember? I think that with the development of, like I said, highly visible, audible, perceptual art and culture in Carson City, you will see more people opting to stop by Carson as opposed to stopping by Gardenville or Reno even to stay if they haven't made their way already, and you'll see more interest in developments, capitalizing on that new emerging tourist population specifically.
Milo, anything you want to add? Any questions of us, or anything you want to add?
I would just like to say thank you so much for your consideration, and thank you so much for the work that you're continuing to do for the, the city. No matter what happens today, I'm very glad to have had the opportunity and very glad to have had the chance to participate, and I will continue to.
Well, you're a very articulate young man, so.
Thank you so much.
I was going to ask you before you leave. What, what are you studying at WNC?
At WNC, I just, I'm getting my associate of arts to begin with, and soon I'm shooting for a degree in literature specifically.
All right. Anything else? Board? That's it? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Now the hard, click that out. There you go. Now the hard part comes. You know, Board, I didn't think these decisions could get much harder, but this one takes the cake. This one takes the cake. So, you know, I need some, here's a thought how, how to do this, you know, we can just, each of us go through and give, you know, and I don't know if we ought to say top one or two, I think, because they're probably all top people, but just say, you know, we have to point two, just give two names, and we'll see how we go. Is that, whatever you want to do.
Could I ask a question of my colleagues? Because I'm 76, and I can get away with saying my memory doesn't work all the time perfectly. My memory is that it was Lynn Carrigan who mentioned artists in residence at the, at the prison, but I don't, but it wasn't my question, and so am I right about that? Okay. I thought I was. Okay. Thanks. That's all I needed to know.
Yep.
What do you think, Brad?
Yeah, I, I can start this off, if you're okay with it.
Sure, sure.
Okay. My highest two scores went to Milo and Kelsey.
My highest two scores went to Christopher and Milo.
Am I up next?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, and I'll break the tie if there's a tie. I'll take the heat.
So I think we already got the three-way on Milo, because I, I thought he had my top score, and then admittedly, I'm really torn between Christopher and Kelsey, because I think they bring just a slightly different element to the table. But I think that Kelsey just brings a slightly higher strength to where we want to go.
I thought I was going to be irrelevant. You know, this is really tough, because I put, I put these two together. I mean, I mean, I thought it was just great, and, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a nod to Chris on this one, so. All right? So we'll entertain a motion to appoint Chris and Milo to the Cultural Commission.
I move to appoint Christopher Levy and Milo McCormick to the Cultural Commission Citizen at Large position, each to fill a three-year term that will expire in January of 2021.
On a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. Folks, and all of you.
Great job, everybody. Yeah, great job.
It's a great job. I mean, you know, these are difficult positions, so just bear with us. We bear with, you know, at some point in time, I think, in our, in our lives on this board, we need to change the process by which we do these things, because I think, you know, it's, it's difficult to have people come up and then have you say, "Well, no, you didn't get appointed." That's difficult to do, because, you know, as much as everybody would say, you know, it doesn't matter, it does matter. I mean, because it has to, and so there has to be a different way of approaching these things that, where we don't put, we can be in the box, I mean, that's what we get elected to do, but I don't think it's, it's particularly helpful to put the public in this, in the kind of the same box, but that's just me, so, anyway. Mark, do you want to add something?
Mark Salinas, for the record. Mayor, just to echo the, the board's astonishment of these applicants, I have to say, in the past two years that I've been here, this is the highest amount of applicants that we've received. We received five people, and certainly, there's many ways to have a voice at the table, and for those that were not appointed, I would strongly encourage them to attend our next meeting in this room, November 26th, and meetings thereafter. There's many ways to contribute to Carson City's creative community, and, and I hope to see all five of them very soon.
Mark, I would say it's because you're here that there's so many applicants.
Yeah, but your hair's getting a little gray there.
It's just art, right?
Maybe you're dying of gray, huh? Want to be like us old guys?
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything else? Huh?
I would like to say to the applicants, too, that this is a very difficult thing that we have to do here to pick, especially in this case where we have five applicants, and the worst interview amongst the five of you was excellent.
Yeah.
Okay? So we're looking at micro scales of scoring between you to go from excellent to, you know, superstar, and it's like this. So please, keep coming back and keep trying. Y'all did really well. We'd love to have all of you participate somewhere, doing something, but we have two positions and five people going for it, so our job is that we have to pick two people. So thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that in the sense that I had to ask the question I asked because, A, of my memory, and B, because I had a tie for the, for the other one besides Chris, so it's just the way it works sometimes. I'm sorry.
And I see committee work in all of your futures, that the Residence at the Prison program is definitely Lynn's project. I see Kelsey helping Chris out on the Native American, and let's get some music at the prison, too. I don't know. Anyway, you all were just wonderful. Thank you.
Well, and kind of the silver lining on this is, you know, this is where Carson City is.
That's right.
I mean, that's such a nice thing. I mean, we've got all different demographics of folks here involved in the community. I mean, in particular, this was a good, you know, I know we didn't make everybody happy here today, but, but from, from a standpoint of building communities and things, this is what it's all about.
And I would just want to echo the fact that all of you are needed in helping push our arts over the top. We are the capital city, and I want our arts to stand out. So that's the thought process.
Okay, we'll bring that Burning Man stuff down here.
I want to see some guitar work at the head, so that we can bring everyone to that project.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd throw that out as an idea.
Good idea. All right. So anything else to come before the board? All right, then we're going to stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled board meeting. I'd like to say thanks to our, our board here. This morning's discussions were in detail, and it was just, democracy and process was, was served this morning, I think, so that's my two cents. All right? Anything else? We're adjourned.